Hi, this is Gretchen. I think Khalid was on the other link, the Teams link.
All right, relax. I will now call the row when you hear your name, please, and have your presence. Corvastis Gary. Julianne.
Present.
Demetrius.
Present.
Cecily.
Present.
Janice.
Present.
Case. Kimber. Carla. Hector. Gretchen.
Present.
A Corvastis present, this is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising from this meeting to the Office of Open Government at open.gov. Notice that the meeting was posted in the DC Register on the Commission's website, dcharz.vc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government Central Needs Calendar at open-dc.gov. The meeting has been conducted in a hybrid format with some of the commissioners in 200 High Street location and over remotely beyond the zone factor. The meeting is live streamed on the Commission's YouTube channel and electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contribute their hopes, dreams, and energy to make it a history that led to this phone. Some were brought here against their will, some were driven to withdraw rather to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some lived in this land in more generations in turn of the council. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all areas of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge those who've been buried for honoring the truth. We stand with the ancestral lands of the Conchintan and Iskandawat people. We pay respects to their elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths in and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? There are no objections. The agenda stands as adopted. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes of the November 18, 2024 meeting. Our trust and commissions have had a chance to read them, and I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
They're moved.
Second.
I'd like a second.
Good. All the name, I.
I'm.
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Bye.
Good evening and welcome to everyone. Our last commission meeting of the calendar year, not fiscal year, of calendar year. And we will start with our usual presentation of the artist, studying summer turn, DC Jazz Festival is here, honey.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Sharon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Would you like me to speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed that first part. It's a pleasure to be with you. Good afternoon and thank you for such a provocative presentation last week on Arts DC. I think that's a fantastic opportunity for us and could be a coalescing force as we find ways to connect as arts presenters. The DC Jazz Festival just turned 20. We started in 2004 on a paper napkin by Charlie Fishman, and for those of you who do not know, we recently lost Charlie in November, and we'll be having a celebration of life for our founder in April at the Kennedy Center. In those 20, in those 20 years, we've actually grown as a small 12 concerts on U Street to doing over 93,000 festival goers in 2014 over Labor Day weekend. We are five day fantastic festival that celebrates DC's contribution to jazz. But we also have education programs and we have an embassy series as well, and we've just started a jazz DC orchestra. Our impact has been significant to the jazz genre here regionally, also nationally, and I would dare say internationally. And the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanity has been right there holding our hand all the way. We know that it's been a competitive process, so we have done our part to submit a very true and comprehensive application for a variety of funding sources. This year, we're excited that we're getting not only general operating, but we're getting a capital arts grant for us to do an app, a very fantastic app that we're working on, and also a field trip. We, you know, presenting jazz to our DC Public and Charter School students is at the heart of what we do as we build tomorrow's jazz fans. So I cannot thank you all enough for, and I know I speak on behalf of just not myself, but other nonprofits here in DC of the tremendous work. I, you know, to watch you and how you've been leading this fantastic commission in the last few years has been really inspiring for me as a longstanding arts leader in this town. I was also born on Morris Road in Ward Eight, went to Moton. And so just to see what we're able to do with the arts is really quite inspiring for me. What I would say is, you know, something that really continues to motivate me, and I'd like to offer this to the commission, is to really think of ways that we can connect each other more. I know for me, we do really great education work, but oftentimes the, the, the names of the teachers change, the principals, the, you know, some of the things that we do in public and charter schools change. And if we could find a way in real time to be able to share that kind of data with us that are doing great work with the education school system, it would really help to do our job better. And also ways that, that maybe we can share ideas around field trips. I know that's a very important part of what you offer us. And so I would like to, you know, if there's any kind of focus group or anything that you're planning around this field trip opportunity that you offer us, I'd love to be a part of that as we move forward. The other thing is, is as you're thinking about the big send off for Arts Week in 2026, ask that you not leave us small nonprofits out. We do great work. And so, you know, I know we lean a lot on our big presenters here, the Kennedy Center, and we just got the Social Impact Award through the Kennedy Center. So we love our partnership with them, Smithsonian, the National Gallery of Art. But there are so many small nonprofits like ourselves that can offer you a lot as you start to move forward in planning. Kudos to you for bringing Michael Kaiser on board to, to, to build that strategic plan for that. It was wonderful to listen to him really talk about the history of DC and talk about, you know, what we've done so far and how we should be leaders moving forward. And so, you know, I just, I asked that if there's any way that the DC Jazz Festival and our board and our, our patrons, our staff can serve the DC Commission in any way, we will, and I promise that in 25, we will do a better job as, as showing up as, as a panelist for, for some of your pants. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you to all of this great work we do. We're here because of organizational excellence and know that Art Week DC is designed for all of our artists and arts organizations in DC, large and small, fringe and otherwise. So we want everyone in there because that's part of what is the glory of DC, but so will not just be for the usual suspects, it will be for everyone. Thank you. Normally we go to the public comment portion of our agenda, but we have no one who signed the public comments. So we move on to our director's report. We have a good, everyone, the meeting in one, named Sharon Martin, here in King Air. Well, who is now bald. At one time I had hair with a blue jacket on. Want to start with some standard updates. There are currently no new hires, no new postings until after New Year. And just for our awareness, after New Year, we will be posting, I believe, for our, to add to our resource allocation team. So, and then we'll be announcing in January, the three new grant managers that we just selected. So as of right now, there are no new postings and new hires, but you'll be hearing information about that at the next commission meeting. So our training, CAH will observe an in-office standard dance from Wednesday, January 22nd through Friday, January 24th. We plan to utilize this time to examine and update policies as OPs, trainings, and all that is needed to ensure we are as responsive and supportive to our grantees and the community. We are currently working to finalize the commissioners' management training as well. For as a resident, certainly, the grants division has begun transitioning to a new space near the front entrance of the building. Please, commissioners, down by the area, once you have an opportunity to see the location where the grants team will be housed. There is an additional grant information included in today's presentation from the Grants Committee. I am excited to state that we have worked together with the staff to utilize our new post award system to make the process more efficient. Also, we are examining a new grant management system to implement for the new motorcycle. For example, as of December 13th, that was Friday, we created 54% of the FY25 purchase orders. That was for GOS. For context, we only had created 20% of the purchase orders this time this year. These numbers have decreased since Friday and with, with also fellowship appeals being created as well. I would like to remind the applicants, this is very important, to please review your information and diffs to ensure what we have is accurate and up to date. I will say this, and this is not in my report. I watch our grant managers daily. Wait for email responses, wait for people to call back so we can get your information. Make sure your bank accounts are up to date. Make sure the same information that's on your bank account and is also on diffs. We, we really need you to be an active participant so that we can get you your money. You know, if you don't do these things, it makes it difficult for us, but moreover, it slows the process down for your colleagues. So if you have any questions, please reach out to your grant managers and check the CAH website for information on when trainings will be given. Poetry Out Loud. I want to remind our commissioners and those watching that Poetry Out Loud is scheduled from Saturday, March 15th, 2025. For the location, we're currently considering Planet Word at 925 13th Street Northwest. Anyone interested in participating should contact the agency's Arts Learning Coordinator, Andrea Brown, and Andrea, A-N-D-R-E-A dot Brown, number three at DC.gov. Point number five, a strategic plan. The team has been working to present the new fiscal year's updated RMP to the Office of Contracting and Procurement, OCP, with $120,000 threshold of procurement. We were alert over Friday that the RMP should be published at some point this week. So we finally gotten replay over the finish line. Once published, we will work with OCP to finalize the vendor. Some commissioners may be called to sit on a panel for review. As we work further with OCP, we will keep you updated. And just to taper everybody's expectations, know that we, we can offer our guidance and we can offer our suggestions to OCP, but they will make their decision and we will go with what they decided for us. Lastly, communication nomination. This is something that we should be really proud of as a government agency because you don't hear this happening often. I would like to congratulate our communications team on becoming finalists for the PR Daily Award. Although they did not win the award, being beat out by Warner Brothers, the team did receive an honorable mention award for their efforts on the media campaign Legacy Civil Rights at 60 in the Arts Entertainment and Media Campaign Division. So let's just hear it. James, can somebody turn it? Dan, Bringsus, Tagli, Pion. Oh, yes. Andy, yes. You're in the headboard. I'm popping out. Andy, of the arts, of course. Corinne. Karen. What's our?
Michelle.
Michelle, thank you, Lord. Michelle, Vanessa, Rob. Yes, I think I've got all those. Alyssa. Yes. Luisa, Luisa. This is a big thing because government agencies don't open, we're also often chiding for our PR and our marketing and our communications. So we want to give them a good shout out for that. And that is all of my report. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? All right. We'll move on to the finance committee report. I think Kimber Eaton isn't here. She, she's lost her voice. So I think Brandon, I'll just ask you to stand in.
Good afternoon, or excuse me, good evening. Happy Monday, everyone. My name is Brandon Saunders. I'm an African American male, wearing a gray sweater. Yes, I'm happy to step in and share this month's finance committee report. Unfortunately, the finance committee was unable to meet due to logistics.
We lost you, Brandon. You back, Brandon?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just start over from the top. So I am happy to bring this, this month's finance committee report to you, to everyone this evening. Excuse me, we, we were unable to meet as of, as of now, we do have a meeting scheduled for this Friday at 2:00 PM, where we're going to go over a little bit more over the formulation cycle for FY26, given that the agency just participated in the BRT for last month, as well as the execution cycle for FY25, where we're just going to go over the overall spend plan, excuse me, for the rest of the fiscal year. So that is a good, pretty good segue into what you're seeing on the current screen. Excuse me, I'm a little issue with my own voice, to be honest with you. And right now, what you're seeing is a good, is a split between the administrative and the grant side overall. And then, so one thing that we added this, so we can move to the next slide. One, two, one thing that we added that was a little bit of an addition from previous months in which you would have seen the financial breakdown is a little bit more of a robustness, a table, a second slide, rather, that has a little bit more robustness to, to the overall breakdown of the non-personnel services. So right now, what you're seeing is just a little bit more general, some, depending on how detailed some, you know, favor a little bit more, some favor a little bit less. You know, rows on the, on the screen. So we just wanted to kind of added that for a little bit more context overall to the budget. So as of right now, because we're still in quarter one, we're still pretty much on a, you know, very much the, very light trend. It will pick up for quarter two, for quarter three on the admin side as well as the grant side as well. So we can move to the next slide. So this is the additional, further additional breakdown that I was referring to from before. So instead of it, it just having general references to categories such as supplies, contracts, equipment, you can see a little bit more of what each of that means. And then we can go to the last slide as well. And so one thing that was very, was new as of last month was an additional project codes to identify each of the status of the grants overall. Before, there was a little bit more, I, I would say less transparency, a little bit more of a consolidation of the grant programs to cohorts. And now we've made an addition to, to show the additional breakdown for the, for the whole, for each specific program for everyone. So that's all that I have. I'm pretty sure that we'll have a little bit more overall in January. We'll probably, we'll have two meetings worth of, worth of notes and additional, as Director Myers referenced in his early report. We think we've established all the requisitions and diffs, but there are other variables, of course, such as supplier. So supplier codes that are not fully in, in the system, some other things that are a little bit more technical in nature. But we do ask that there is, you know, a little bit urgency to, to towards sending that information into your grant manager so that we can just transact the funds and disseminate them as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Jill Hesman.
This is Commissioner Marianza. I'm a white woman of Italian and Irish descent and also Spanish. And I'm wearing a purple hat, I have glasses on, and I have $20 earrings that I got at the airport. Brandon, I want, we can come them at the Smithsonian store in the National. Brandon, I want, we could come them at the Smithsonian store in the, the National.
That's more than just.
I mean, this is like a, I thought it was a good deal. Anyways, Brandon, I'd like to commend you and your team on adding the transparency to the expense categories presented here today. Um, and I also want to commend you guys for, I know this is the second meeting of this, but the, to have, you know, the full grant ca- categories, um, spelled out for the community to see. I think that's really, um, just a transparent way of letting the public know, um, how the, you know, taxpayer, all the money is being spent. So I just wanted to kind of call that out and, and say thank you for going the extra mile on that. And I, and I look forward to our meeting on, on Friday.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. Um, Grants Committee, Gretchen.
Good evening, everyone. Gretchen Wharton, black female, platinum hair, black glasses. Welcome. Um, in terms of the, uh, FY twenty-five grant cycle, we're currently processing twenty FY twenty-five grant agreements, and there are eleven hundred and sixty awards. Once these agreements are routed and receive all necessary approvals, a purchase order will be generated. The grant manager will then reach out to each grant recipient with detailed invoicing instructions. We anticipate reaching the final stage of approval by the end of the year. That's very aggressive, but we're doing our best to get there. And I, my applause out to everybody on the grants team. It's a lot of work to do and they're really doing above and beyond their jobs. The team is also gearing up to open applications for the FY twenty-six grants, general operating support, project events and festivals, and East Arts, which will all open in March of twenty twenty-five. Of the eleven hundred and sixty FY twenty-five grants, seven hundred and twenty-eight have been fully executed. Of the two hundred and five FY twenty-five G O S grants, a hundred and sixty-five are fully executed and one hundred eleven have received a purchase order. The grants department has made significant effort to support the FY twenty-five grantees. We held a grants revamp. It's been our third. And, um, this was a month ago. We held it on Friday, November twenty-second. Uh, all of the grants managers and, uh, many of the staff were there along with the commissioners. And we had each grants, each grants manager review the twenty twenty-three suggestions and outcomes with ninety-one percent implementation reach, which is phenomenal. So again, my applaud to the grant staff. Discussed updating definitions in the request of applications to provide more clarity for grantees and applicants. Analyzed ward funding and grant budgets for the past three years. Explored ways to enhance the fellowship grant examining its support versus competitive nature. Follow-up meeting is going to be held in January twenty twenty-five, where all of the grants managers will get together. Um, we learn from each other, and that's why the grants revamp has been pretty successful for the last three years. And we're going to sift through everything we've talked about and see where we can learn from each other and do what we can do to improve each of the grants. DIPS Wednesday, which was launched in October, the grants team is currently hosting a series of live chats on Wednesdays between twelve P M and one P M to aid grantees in navigating the new DIPS payment system. The series covers the following: how to register in DIPS as a new grantee, how to access the account as a returning grantee, linking banking information for payment via direct deposit, how to submit an invoice once a purchase order is established. The next DIPS chat will be held on Wednesday, December eighteenth to twelfth. And for more information, contact Carrie Kaliba, and you can see the address there. These are very, very important to our grantees, so please try to attend. On the Friday live chats, um, get ready for grant guidance. Friday live chats will resume on Friday, January thirtieth. Ask our team anything about grants process, eligibility, and application tips. Please visit D C Arts D C dot gov. Again, my thanks to everyone on the grants team. Really appreciate your hard work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Gretchen. Questions, commissioners? So clearly every year we make progress getting out grants to the right people at the right time, et cetera. Thank you. Thank you, Grants Committee and the whole team. Public Art, I'm not sure if Carl is here. Corinne, would you present for Public Art, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Great. Uh, so Commissioners, since couldn't be here, uh, and the Public Art Committee did not be in December, but I'm happy to provide an update for the Public Art Team. So we've been moving at a steady clip with various grant lines, programmatic activities, and planning efforts. Um, uh, and I don't think I introduced myself. I'm Corinne Miller. I'm the Public Arts Manager for the D C Commission on Arts and Humanities. So I'm a white woman with glasses and I'm wearing a black dress today. So several updates, there's a report in your packet, um, and I'll go over these, uh, relatively quickly, but happy to answer any questions as well. Um, so first off is an update on the Mary and Mary Junior Legacy Public Art Project. Um, so we're very pleased that the installation of the murals, bust, and kiosks took place on November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, um, which went very well. And then a celebration was held on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-four with several hundred people, um, with the Mary Foundation, uh, and the next generation of talent honoring Mayor Barry's legacy. Um, the Art Bank Program Grant, um, the administration of that program is moving forward, uh, with the majority of that continuing the invoicing stage. So that's all, uh, moving along. On December ninth, we held a, uh, closing reception and artist talk for the D C Arts Now Exhibition, uh, with several of the artists, and it was moderated by one of the jurors. So that was well attended. Um, and then the show just closed last Friday. So if you came in here in person, you probably saw that the gallery is changing over right now. Uh, related to that is our art exhibition curatorial grant program. So our next show will open on January sixteenth from five to seven P M. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, um, but there's more details in the packet. And then I'm pleased to let everyone know that the Color the Curve School Safety Program, the request for applications for that went live on Friday. Um, that's a really special partnership that we do with the District Department of Transportation and D C Public Schools for, uh, school safety and murals. And then, uh, there's an update here as well about collections management. So the Art Bank Program is really robust and active. We have eighteen open requests for new installations, deinstallations, um, changes over. So the team is very busy working on that as well. Um, last Saturday, we held a celebration at Cooper Gordon Park, uh, for a sculpture project that we've been working there with artist Chris Tusemas with the local Shaw community. So the sculpture is called Let Us Lift Each Other Up, a tribute to Margaret Cooper and Lillian Gordon. Um, so that was a lo- a lovely event we had in the cold on Saturday. And then a quick, a quick update on another project that the team's been working on is called D C Gateways. We've been doing some work with the Office of the Chief Technology Officer around mapping potential public art locations. So we had a focus group around that in November, um, which went really well. Um, and I think that about, um, wraps it up. The final update is around the Public Art Building Communities Grant. So our team continues to work with the three grantees that we have this year through that program. So happy to answer any, any questions anyone has.
Again, what could say y'all not been busy? You all have been very busy. Uh, congratulations to all of you, y'all. Thank you. Questions? Yeah. Um, Idea Committee, Cecily.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm Cecily Abimana, and I am a black woman wearing, um, glasses and a green sweater. Um, I also have a newborn, so I don't know how long she's going to be quiet. So if you hear some noises in the background, just know it's not me. It's my five-month-old. Uh, but this has been a bit of a transition month for the Idea Committee. Um, I'm officially back from maternity leave, and I want to thank, uh, Chair Reggie for, um, taking over while I was out. Um, in this transition month, um, uh, we did not meet as a committee, but I did meet individually with Erin, Reggie, and our new people relations specialist, um, that started, uh, in mid-November. So I just got a chance to really get caught up. Um, I am excited to say that out of all, that all forty-four recommendations are either complete or in progress so that we made a lot of great progress, um, over the past few months. Um, I am going to turn it over to, um, uh, Grace Allen, who just came on last month, um, and she's going to give a few more updates.
Much. Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Allen. I go by she, her, they, them pronouns. I'm an African American woman, wearing a, a black headband, a black shirt, and a green blazer. Um, so, so excited to meet all of you. Some of you I've already met in person. Others of you I look forward to meeting in the future. Just a bit of my background. I do come from a trauma-informed D I B A plus background, meaning that I have the expertise in things such as diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, accessibility, and all that comes with it and the intersectionality that comes within those spaces. Um, I also have a legal and compliance and training and restorative, uh, mediation background. So I'm happy to bring all of those tools and expertise to this role. Um, as mentioned, I've been here for almost a month, a couple of days shy of, of my thirty days, uh, but I wanted to give a report out. Uh, during this time, I've been able to meet with our staff and establish those relationships while also mapping out the work that we're going to do within this space. Um, I've been able to have the pleasure of joining colleagues in the Office of Racial Equity in meeting with them, uh, via the D I Leads cohort, which is really exciting work being done there. I've been able to train under them already, uh, and get a better understanding of how we're using equity within the data that we collect. Uh, using E Q and equity within, uh, A I and data is something that's really, uh, something that I'm passionate about. So excited to have been trained in that way and to learn more in that space. And then I've also had the pleasure of connecting with a number of counterparts throughout D C government. So meeting with individuals throughout, uh, a number of agencies as it relates to the diverse population. So veterans and women's policies, uh, meeting with those who are re-entering or re-emerging into our, our collective society, meeting with individuals, uh, who represent the disability community and so many others. Uh, they're all excited to have someone joining them in the work as I am excited to join them. Um, and so I did want to go into some next steps. Understanding that we did have, and we do have those forty-four recommendations, but we want to expand and grow beyond those recommendations. How are we moving forward? And so with that in mind, uh, my plan is to execute with the support of all of you, along with our amazing leadership, a culture-forward D I B A plus plan. So we're going to focus on things like culture, uh, facilitating these foundational understandings around language and definitions around trainings when it comes to our internal staff, but also externally, making sure that we're, um, holding each other accountable to the work and that we're distributing our resources in a way that's equitable, that we're reaching all corners of our district in a way that, um, promotes equity and inclusion and belonging. So going through and assessing our grant-making and our outreach, outreach processes is something that, um, I'll be undertaking as well. And then codifying the changes. Yes, we're learning. Yes, we're building out language, but we're also building out spaces and policies and procedures that support those definitions, support those communities. So going in and establishing those policies and procedures while also amplifying new ways to reach individuals who feel as if they're in the shadows or the margins. Regardless of district, uh, location, regardless of ward, everyone is welcomed and everyone has the ability to succeed and receive the resources of this agency. So making sure that we are expanding inclusion and accessibility in the way that we outreach is something that's, um, also something really important to me. Happy to have already collaborated with some of our internal staff on those points, and the work will continue. And then we want to catalyze connectivity. We want to make sure we're doing the work internally, that we're reaching out externally, but that we're also bridging those gaps. It's all about the connection and intersectionality. So doing things like igniting solution-based collaborations between our community, our commissioners, our staff, and some of those counterparts that I talked about earlier, and also connecting with our commissioners. I've been able to meet with our staff. I've been able to meet with the departments and kind of map out where we want to go, some of those footprints we want to lay in the earlier parts of next year. But I also want to meet with the commissioners I have not yet met with. And so with the amazing support of the I D A Chair, we're going to take some time and map some time out to get on your schedule to really meet with you. We want to know where we were, some of the diversity that we've had leading up to where we are now. And then we want to be able to build out that history. So it's almost like Stan Co for you, to understand where you're going, you have to know where you've been. And so we want to take those steps together with all of you. So I hope you're open to it. Can't wait to meet with you in person and virtually when your schedule allows. Um, I guess that's it for me. Thanks so much for your time, and it's nice to meet all of you.
Great. Thank you and welcome again. Questions, comments?
It's great. This is, uh, Commissioner Brienza. It's great to meet you virtually. Um, and I wanted to say that I, I think I would really welcome, um, meeting with you and meeting with the committee just as the governance chair, um, utilizing policies and procedures, also receiving an actual report out of the forty-four recommendations that have been, um, completed, that the commissioners receive that as a document, I think would only enable us to support this work and to triumph, um, the way we can all move forward together. So I look forward to meeting and welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Oh. Um, so you should know, Grace, I got a note from a former C H executive director who was so pleased of your outreach to them. So, uh, Grace is meeting with as many of the former E Ds of C H that she can to understand the history and context of that something. And that really, they were really impressed with that. They gave me credit. I said it wasn't my credit. I had something to do with it. So, so I thank you for that. Thank you for that.
I, I know there's so much happening. I didn't have time to mention everything, but that, that is a great highlight. So thank you for that. Uh, looking forward to connecting with as many people as I can.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
You have to turn your mic. Let's add a big plug and give you the conceptual framework of how this all came about so you can have the history. I'd be happy to do it.
Oh, thank you so much. I look forward to meeting with you. And it was a pleasure to briefly meet you, um, during the celebration of the legacy of your husband. So thank you so much. I look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Art Education. I think Hector is not here.
He is, he is here.
Oh, yes.
I'll be reporting out, um, if you're okay with that, Hector, still?
Yes, please, I am. Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, no problem. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Brown. I'm the Arts Learning Coordinator. Um, and I am African American, an African American woman, wearing a black dress and a black and white shepherd sweater. Um, the Arts Education Committee met on Tuesday, December tenth at, uh, two thousand twenty-four. In attendance were, um, Committee Chair Hector Torres and Commission Chair Reggie Van Lee. Celebrate the Creative Spark Residency Program is now open for those who would like to apply. Celebrate the Creative Spark is a program for local teaching artists and arts organizations who are interested in providing engaging arts education programming for D C seniors, for the D C senior community ages fifty-plus or pre-K through twelve D C P S or D C P C S students. The deadline to submit applications is Monday, December thirtieth at five P M. District resident teaching artists and district-based, um, arts organizations are encouraged to apply. Please visit our website, uh, located under the Arts Education Programs tab. You'll find the application information about applying there. Um, also, Poetry Out Loud, um, is a national poetry recitation contest that invites local high school students to participate in a nationally recognized pre-twentieth century poetry recitation contest. Teaching artists have been selected to provide recitation coaching for seven confirmed area high schools with three additional schools pending. This year's regional competition will take place on Saturday, March fifteenth. Please forgive the typo. It is going to be on Saturday, March fifteenth this year. Um, and as we mentioned, we are looking to host that at Planet Word, but we'll be following up with that as well. Uh, and then lastly, the Call for Twenty Twenty-Five Summer Interns will go live on, on Monday, January sixth. C H seeks current, um, college students and recent graduates uh, with an interest in working in the Grants Arts Education or Events Department. Internships are six to eight weeks, uh, six to eight, eight-week immersive experience, and it's a great experience for college students with an interest in a career in the arts. Perspective interns should. Perspective interns should prepare to provide a professional resume, an interest letter identifying their department of interest, and a one-to-three-page writing sample. Applications will not be accepted or reviewed prior to the application opening date. Um, and those applications can come directly to me, um, my first and last name. So Andrea A-N-D-R-E-A dot Brown, the number three, at d c dot gov. Applications will be accepted on Monday, January sixth through Friday, January thirty-first at five PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Hector. Um, we'll move on to the Special Creator Report. I'll report on Art Week DC. And Miss Sumchar stole some of my thunder, talking about the event we held on this Friday, uh, Friday thirteenth. Um, we uh, we held it at the, the Great Hall of the Gala Building. So it was the right sort of setting for the moment we're in as far as being able to bring back to the two-hundred-or-so people that contributed to feedback and inputs on what Art Week DC wants to be. I'm happy to report that we had about eighty people in the room and well of a hundred people online. So just about everybody who participated somehow participated in this meeting as well. Uh, from the two-hundred-or-so stakeholders we've spoken to over the last six, ten months. We summarized the findings from the various stakeholder reports um, and presentation that brought together all the thoughts that were shared with us by the our stakeholders, as Miss Sumchar said, Michael Kaiser, uh, who is with the DeVos Institute, formerly the President of the Kennedy Center for fourteen years, uh, did a preliminary report out based on both the feedback from the stakeholders and interviews and research and analysis that he and his team did, delivered to us a vision of what Art Week DC could be uh, and a strategic plan around that as well. His work will finish in January, so there's still time for input to still go into the final sort of plan. We didn't take questions from the floor, but we did provide a QR code for people to provide their feedback. I noticed a number of cameras that went up in the meeting. And as far as saying, even before the meeting was over, a number of people submitted their questions. We encourage everyone who's listening. If you have input on what Art Week needs to look like, our plan is to distribute both the presentation I made that summarized upon it and the presentation I think that Michael Kaiser made. Uh, you can put these on the website if you're possible. Uh, sure. So we'll put it on our website and you can go ahead and look at it. If you have comments, please provide it. Because we really want to create an event that meets as many needs of our constituents as possible. It's impossible to please everybody. We get that. We'd like very much to please as many as people as possible in a reasonable way. Um, with that, that summarizes the Art Week DC. I'm gonna make a pitch for twenty-five. I'm not going to say that. I really, really want to say something in twenty-two. I can say that. One of the things I wanted to make sure the public was very much aware is that none of the work that we are doing toward Art Week um, pulls from any of the grant donors uh, that go to all of you or doesn't uh, keep us from being able to be uh, as robust from a grant standpoint as we would like to be. Uh, this is, this comes from partnerships and a completely different uh, sector of our budget. Uh, so I just want people not to feel or think that with the work that we've done here, the progress we've made here, that we've been distracted. Uh, at any rate, the, the full focus of the Commission is, has been centered around our grants. But we do recognize uh, that from an economic development standpoint, uh, that this is something that will not only equip, but empower our grantees uh, to do far more. And uh, we are excited uh, to be around, uh, be behind doing something that's not been done before in this particular manner in Washington DC. Uh, I would like to also point out, uh, some people have, uh, mentioned that it's taking a long time to get to here. That's been very intentional because uh, one of the comments we heard from uh, the people from our basketball event with uh, Reggie and them is that they wish they had talked to the community. That's something they wish they had done. And by us taking this particular uh, path, we have learned, I believe, more than we thought we'd ever to realize around trends, around communities. Uh, but we have found what happened at the Gala Building, both online and in person. We, we utilize our power as conveners, which is what we hope this uh, effort will do. So we just wanna reaffirm everyone to know uh, that uh, we do have the power to walk and go. Uh, and this is something that's gonna empower our grantees. Great. Well said. Questions, comments? Art Week DC, anyone?
I have, I have a comment. This is Commissioner Brienza again. Um, I was not able to attend um, because I was in Arkansas. And I also could not join the livestream. I asked the events team if it was gonna be recorded and shared. Um, and I hope that the Commissioners who were not able to be there can get a report out on um, things before it's like Michael Kaiser has finished everything, just so that we are able to speak to the community and speak to grantees that come to us about this with some level of authority. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that to you and we're, we're working to get that, of course, on the website.
Tomorrow.
Uh, elsewhere. Other questions, comments on Art Week DC? So we have no unfinished business, but we do have a piece of new business and an announcement from Commissioner Chase Maggiano. Chase, I'll let you lead your announcement.
Hello, everybody. I'm a white male wearing a blue uh, Oxford shirt and glasses. Uh, this is a sad piece of new business. Uh, tonight has to be my last meeting on the Commission. The reason is because three months ago I took a job in New York, so now I'm splitting time between two cities. And doing that while also being a father has created almost no free time at all. Um, and so I unfortunately have to let a few things go, including my service on the Commission. But I wanna thank all of you, uh, commit- first of all, my fellow Commissioners for making me feel so welcome uh, to the amazing staff for um, making such great headway on so many efforts and to the public for keeping us accountable. So I wish you all well and I'll be supportive uh, from the sidelines. Um, and then in, anything in relation to the um, uh, uh, words escaping me. Sorry about that. Uh, I have dad, I have dad brain. Thank you. The foundation uh, effort. Um, I have plenty of information uh, stored in my head. Uh, I think all of it's on the drive. I'm gonna, if, if anyone has any questions about that, I'm very happy to be a resource anytime. So thank you all.
First, thank you for your service. Second, you can rub what you can. Uh, New York isn't far enough away, so we will be involved in you in all sorts of ways. But, but thank you for your service. And we do a part of the Commission is just a piece of art that we provide to them as a gift. A token of our appreciation, you'll be getting that as well. And hopefully you can hang it proudly in New York City and we will see you, tell them where you got it. Uh, but, but thank you. Thank you. Please join me in applauding. So there being no further business, the next meeting of the Commission will be held Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, five thirty PM. Everyone, please enjoy the holidays. All of us, especially the staff, with all the hard work you do. So enjoy the holidays and be as much as you want. We'll see you in the new year. The time is now six nineteen and this meeting is adjourned.